Hello, good afternoon and welcome to Seattle City Club's District 5 City Council Debate. I'm your moderator, Amy Radell. I'm with KUOW. With me today are Natalie Swaby of King Vibe and Lilly Fowler of KCTS and Crosscut. Seattle City Club would like to acknowledge their presenting sponsor, Amazon, and their supporting sponsor, AARP, and our host sponsor, Finney Neighborhood Association, for making this debate possible. And now, please welcome our Seattle City Council, District 5 candidates, Ann Davison Sattler and Deborah Juarez. Let you guys get settled. Thanks for being here. We are going to start our debate with 90-second opening statements from each candidate. We will proceed to questions from our panel. Then we're going to have a lightning round of yes or no questions, and we will work in as many questions from the audience as we can before coming to closing statements at the end. Candidates, your responses are going to be timed, and we will cut you off if you go over your time. Audience, please hold your applause until the end of the debate. Ann Davison Sattler, we'll start with you. Please give us your opening statement, and you have 90 seconds.
Great. Thank you for coming, and thanks for coming out. Thanks to organizers for the event. If we haven't met, my name is Ann. I'm a mom, attorney, community leader, and a teacher. I've lived in Seattle for 23 years. I moved here to work for the Sonics in the 90s. And after 10 years in post-sports, I went to school in my 30s to go back to law school and become an attorney, and now I raise my young kids in D5. I'd like to share something about myself with you that I have not shared in public before. I'm adopted. I was born to a teenage mom, and I was in foster care for a brief amount of time when I was young. And it's really important that people understand that that is why I have such great empathy for what's going on in our streets right now. I'm very concerned at what's happening to people on our streets, and that there's a lot of people coming out of foster homes that, over 50% of them, coming out of foster care, end up homeless, and often with addiction problems due to emotional trauma. So, now, as a mom, I'm answering those difficult questions that my young kids are asking, of what they see on the streets of Seattle, about the man who chased us when they were four and six, about the man named Kurt who we gave our sandwiches to who was thankful and kind. These are urgent issues, and these are things that we can and must do better for in our city, because if we don't, we see what's happened in California, and the feds will show up, and we don't want that to happen. So, it's time we take this seriously. I've watched Seattle change during my children's lifetime, and it's really been because of an unresponsive council, with lack of action, lack of responsiveness. It's leaving residents feeling alone, with no one to help them through their problems. And it's enough, no more of that. My opponent has missed over a third of the last 100 council meetings. She did not come out to cemeteries in D5 who were asking for help. She's shown disdain for residents at public comment time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deborah Juarez.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Deborah Juarez, and I am your Seattle City Councilwoman. I'm very proud to represent District 5. I have lived in this district for well over 30 years. I've been an attorney for 33 years. I've raised my children in District 5. I've been a public defender. I've been at legal services. I was a King County Superior Court Judge. I worked for two governors. I worked on Wall Street, and I found myself being a partner at Williams Castner. What I've done in the last five years is a lot, and briefly, I'll go over that. I've listened to our neighbors, both in District 5 and citywide. I have fought for their needs, and I've delivered for District 5. What have we done? We have contributed more than $2.4 billion of new development and created jobs in D5 in the city alone, starting with the world-class arena at Seattle Center, the new NHL headquarters at Northgate, delivering $18 million for a new Lake City Community Center, fully funding the construction of our pedestrian bike bridge, our two light rail stations, and our $700 million new waterfront. Now, people say, "Why are you running again, Deborah?" And Ann will have her concerns and comments about me and what I do, but let me tell you this. I am the poster child for what district representation should be. We're the only district that has a district office, that has a D5 business coalition, and a community network. Now, I can get into more detail about what we've done for the district and our budget, which we've had a 97% success rate. Affordable housing, we've done that. For our homeless in need, over $1 million to nonprofits, 12 new sidewalk projects, and I'm continuing to fight for our police station, more nurses, social workers, and police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll dive into some subject matter questions now, wanting to talk to you about homelessness. This came from a member of the public, and we'll go to Deborah Juarez first. How exactly will you stop the repeating cycle of sweeping illegal camps only to have them set up across the street?
That's a really good question, because right now, as you know, the mayor's budget's going to come out Monday. And what we know in that budget, which we have supported and made sure that our issues were in there, is a $13 million budget, of which $2.9 million is dedicated to what they call "high barrier." In that budget, what we're looking at is more nurses, more for the navigation team, more police officers, more public safety, community safety officers, and of course, we're going to be expanding for more affordable units. The other issue which is now coming online is the King County Homeless Governmental Authority, which is a county response and a city response to deal with homelessness. And what people need to understand is, we have 11,000 unsheltered people. Homelessness is down about 8%. Of that 11,000, 3,500 live in the city of Seattle. The average rent we know now is about 2,100. As a Native American, I know this, Native American people, though we make up less than 1% of the population, are 10% of the homeless population. So, for us, homelessness citywide and within the district is a very big concern of ours. Thank you.
Great. Ann Davison Sattler.
Yes, we did have that new regional authority that is quite delayed. It's being created. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if our current council member was there in that meeting when we talked about sending $79 million to that entity. It's critical that we get this online. We were advised by an expert that we hired at the city level to advise us to do this years ago, and we've sat on it. So, we declared a state of emergency on homelessness in 2015. We've increased our spending since then, but we have not done anything for people. We have allowed people to just exist on the streets, moving them from one place to the other without providing actual care, like we would for a Red Cross natural disaster. And I do think we should provide that. We need to be providing showers and toilets so that our environment is not used for that. We need to be making sure that we are getting people needs assessment, connected to the help, and using our tax dollars wisely.
Last year, Seattle passed almost $50 million business tax dollars for affordable housing, only quickly reversed course. Many accused Mayor Jenny Durkan and the city council of caving to the interest of big businesses like Amazon. What went wrong, and how would you help the city push past what many still view as a debacle?
Very quickly, Ann, you're wrong. I've had seven briefings on the King County Regional Homeless Authority. I actually helped draft that. The city is putting in $73 million, and the county is putting in $35, so we can go back to that. That is just simply not true. So, let me just move over to the head tax. And let's just be straight. This is why people are confused, like, how did Deborah get endorsed by all of business and all of labor in the King County Dems, and of course, by other prominent groups on each side of the head tax? Seven months, not our finest hour. I voted no, and then I voted no, and then I voted yes, and then I voted to repeal. And the bottom line was this, and we also prepared a 17-page memo taking apart the head tax and the concerns that we had against it. And I'll just be candid, because you people know me. We thought we had a deal. We thought we had a deal with the business, and it turned out that we didn't have a deal. So, the thing that Amazon threatened us with, they end up doing anyway. So, we know we need a progressive tax, and my position has always been and continue to be, and why I voted no the first two times is because it has to go to the voters. It cannot come from the upper tower.
Okay, thank you. I think that what tells us, voters, is that either my opponent is not forthcoming, or there's wishy-washiness, because we don't know where she stands. There was no vote. There was a yes vote. I'm not sure what's going on, but we know that there was a vote with Swant, that yes for the head tax, and then there was a vote for repeal. I mean, at least Swant stayed consistent with her vote. All we know from the public is what we see from a voting record from someone who's elected into office. We don't see any backdoor conversations. I've heard in endorsement meetings, which I'm endorsed by the Seattle Times, and at that interview, she tried to backtrack her vote. So, I'm saying to my opponent that that's not okay for the public. We need to know who we are voting for. We need to know that someone's going to be there for the entire term, and that they are going to show up for our problems. We districted to have someone within reach, and we have someone who's inaccessible to us. Thanks.
Candidate Davison Sattler. More than 2,100 people were identified as living in their cars during this year's point-in-time count. Does Seattle need to create more safe laws for people living in their vehicles?
You know, I know that we are talking about having churches help participate in that, because we have so many compassionate residents here in Seattle. That's why we are a welcoming city. That's why we have people moving here. That's why I came here, right? So, we do need to provide a place that people can access safety, because right now, the streets are not the place to have people on. Again, I go back to the proposal that I have on my website of three proposed Red Cross-like shelter locations. A vehicle is not a safe place to stay. I understand that is a sense of ownership and privacy, but we know that they need more than that. So, I want to go beyond encouraging just vehicular homeownership. That is not a way for people to live. We have better resources. We have an ample budget. We have people with energy and compassion and commitment, so we need to get people into shelter, not living in a car.
Candidate Juarez.
Thank you. Yes, we do need safe laws, and we are working on legislation now, the mayor and councilmember Bagshaw and all the city council. We are now, as you've heard the term, called "van lords." We are now focusing the legislation on those that rent RVs that are uninhabitable to those who are unsheltered. And the reason why we're doing that is we want to be able to provide those people services, that they can keep their partner, their pets in their possession. But the bottom line is this. If you protect people in apartments or homes that are uninhabitable under the landlord-tenant laws, those same laws should extend to the protections of people living in their cars and their RVs. Now, I understand that there's like over 400 RVs down in Soto, and that's just not right. And we know some people are taking advantage of that system. So, we are looking at the enforcement piece of the people that are renting out what they call RV ranching, or that's what they're calling them now. But our point is this. Nobody should live in inhumane, uninhabitable conditions, and we, as a city, need to address that.
Thank you. We're going to go to some climate and transportation questions next, and this will go to Deborah Juarez first, from a district voter. Does District 5 need more bike lanes, and where should shared electric bikes and scooters fit in?
I think that District 5 probably could use, and they should be protected, bike lanes. I think what we've watched, since we watched the Bike Master Plan that was first done in 2007, and it's been through five iterations, I believe, is that I think community needs to decide where the bike lanes go, whether they're being used, and hopefully that they're protected. Where they're going to go is a different issue when we look at the master plan. We have a bike lane on 125th, and I have a joke with Councilmember O'Brien. I've counted 22 people using that bike lane. Okay, that's okay. But there are other bike lanes going down Roosevelt that get used very well. I see in the morning with parents with their kids in their bikes, which is great. So, I think we have to really be laser-focused with a neighbor in business about having those bike lanes. The other day, I got to look out my kitchen window, and I saw four kids riding their bikes to school. That's probably how it should be. My street is kind of part of a greenway, so I'm really proud and glad that people are using that street for that reason. And I think now that we've got more people involved to talk about bike lanes and protected bike lanes and electric bikes, it's going to be a more robust conversation.
I think it's great we have bike lanes. I moved here as a biker. I used to race bikes in college, and I love it. I broke a pedal off riding up the hill down in Madison Park, up to the top of 18th and Madison where I used to live, and I became a long-distance runner now. So, what I want to make sure is we have transportation options that are green, that are available for everybody. Bikes are a critical part of it, and as we get electric bikes and scooters available, more people will be able to participate in that. But right now, we also need to make sure we have adequate sidewalks up here in the north end, right? We're talking about sidewalk equity, where we don't have people who can get on a bike, so we need to make sure there are options available for everyone. That means some roads with the great topography need to have bike lanes, and they should be protected, right? Because if you're an out-of-town visitor and driving around our bike lanes with the way we have them built, sometimes they're difficult to navigate. Then we need to make sure we have also sidewalks available for people who cannot get on a two-wheel, anything two-wheel, to get around, because we don't have that availability necessarily for the north end here. Thanks.
Candidate Sattler, Ann Juarez. Critics say single-family zoning leads to longer commutes, because people can't afford to live close to work. Do you support a comprehensive ban on single-family zoning, similar to what Minneapolis did last year, in part to reduce carbon emissions?
I do not support that. I think that right now, what is great about Seattle, which we all love, is our distinctive neighborhoods. And part of that is the homes and the businesses that are part of those hubs and those neighborhoods. I think the way that we get both is that we have density near our transit hubs. We keep it where people can work as they transition through life, from either maybe being single, like I was, carless. I can have great mobility. I needed to live close to where I worked and could get around the city. As you start to age, or you have other family members that you're caring for, it's critical that we have additional space and other options. I want to see a variety of living styles. That means we make not big places. We make small places that are available for people that are affordable. We make different sizes. We have single-room occupancy back again, so that people can have an affordable place to live, where there's built-in community. And that means we also have some single-family homes as well, because we have a variety of people, therefore, we should have a variety of housing styles. And we can be green at the same time.
Okay. Candidate Juarez.
I don't think that's quite a fair question. I don't think anyone wants to come out of the gates saying that they banned single-family zoning housing, because 75% of the city, as you know, is single-family zoning. I want to go back to an issue that people aren't comfortable talking about, and that's race. We have the zoning that we have, because in the 50s and the 60s, people of color, people like me, Native American, Latina, and some of my brown brothers and sisters in the room, weren't allowed to buy property in the north end. And so, what we're trying to do is right some historical wrongs. We saw the red lighting, not only with housing, we also see it with transportation, and that's where we see the economic racism. Take the crappiest neighborhoods and put all the transportation there, put all the environmental pollution there. So, getting back to single-family zoning. So, what we've tried to do, you can't grow more land, but we've done two things. In downtown, that I chair the waterfront, $700 million, four lawsuits, we grew 20 acres of land. Bitter Lake, they wanted that capped. We got the money in there. We're going to expand that, so we actually grew eight acres of land. I chair parks. What we want to do is continue to expand green spaces and more opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Candidate Juarez, you first on this one. The city started exploring congestion pricing to address traffic congestion, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and create a more equitable transportation system, should the city of Seattle toll downtown streets?
You know, I'm going to flip here, because for some reason, I had a feeling you were going to ask me about congestion pricing. For a while, that was a hot issue. And so, yes, I will tell you why I agree with congestion pricing, but with these caveats, because we did look at the national model. If we do congestion pricing, we have to look at, not only at admissions, we have to look at equity, and we have to look at the increased transportation choices for that revenue piece. So, again, going back to congestion pricing, when it does address our carbon footprint, the big piece that we've been looking at, that the city has been looking at, that the mayor has been looking at, is the equity piece. We don't want it to be disproportionate to people that are poor, low-income, people of color, and people who have, and labor, who have to come downtown, who have to drive downtown, whose jobs depend on driving. That is my main concern. But we do know with congestion pricing that we hope it changes behavior, that we look at the rate, race and social justice equity, which the city already does, and that we also look at encouraging people to have better transportation choices. Thank you.
It will change behavior. What it will do is create traffic on other side roads, because what is human behavior? We try to circumvent when there's a block. We see it around with a tolling of 520. People now are going around the north end of the lake. So, if you live in the north end of D5, you probably have increased traffic because of that. So, what congestion tolling will do is create more traffic problems. It will create a little bit of funding, but the problems and the headaches of the livability standard will go down. So, I don't support congestion tolling. I don't think that's the way to do anything. I've actually come out with another infographic about how we can be green. It's on my website, of how we could just have a small tax. I'm not proposing a new tax, but what I'm saying is, there's a way that we can afford to pay for trees to erase our carbon emissions from our gasoline usage. It is where we can just offset it completely. So, I would not support congestion tolling. I think there are other ways to be green. There are better ways to deal with our transportation, and it's going to come up with more problems than a solution that it will provide.
Thank you. We're going to move to our lightning round. This is where we're going to get a sense of your position on 12 issues very quickly. So, you have some signs on your podium. They say yes, no, or waffle. There's a waffle graphic.
Looks like a waffle.
Which, you know, is a way of saying it's complicated. You know it's tough to give yes or no answers to everything. At the very end of the lightning round, we'll come to each of you, and if there's one of these issues that you really want to say more on, you'll have an opportunity to explain your answer on one of those. So, if you have your signs ready. Our first statement, yes or no, is, "I support looking at new uses for municipal golf courses." Yes, no, or waffle. So, we have Ann Davison Sattler, no, and candidate Juarez, waffle.
Okay. "I support the creation of the new King County Regional Homelessness Authority, which will formulate a county-wide response, including in the city of Seattle."
Both candidates say yes on that.
"I support creating safe injection sites."
That's candidate Juarez with a yes, and candidate Sattler with a no. "I support Washington State," oops, sorry. "I support building a new north precinct for the Seattle Police Department." Both candidates say yes.
"I support Washington State bringing back affirmative action, as outlined in Initiative 1000."
Both candidates say yes to that.
"I support saving the showbox."
I think we already did that, and we're being sued.
Both candidates say yes.
"I support the Urban Forestry Commission's proposal to increase protections for existing trees in Seattle." Both candidates say yes.
"I support Seattle remaining a sanctuary city."
Both candidates say yes to that.
"I support approval of a state income tax."
I'm going to save this one because...
Candidate Juarez, a yes. Candidate Sattler, waffle. Great. "I support a city council proposal allowing up to 40 tiny house villages citywide." Both candidates say no.
"I support shutting down private prison facilities, such as the Northwest Detention Center in Tacoma."
Absolutely.
Both candidates say yes to that.
"I support the new King County Youth Detention Center, as it's currently designed."
Both candidates say yes. Did candidate Juarez have a sign?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, sorry about that. Great.
Thank you, candidates. We want to give you a chance to explain one of those positions, if you'd like to. So, candidate Davison Sattler, we'll start with you. You have 60 seconds.
I gave one waffle on the state income tax, because it is a complicated issue. It is way beyond city council. That is outside the authority of city council position, and I don't think that's appropriate for me to talk on at the moment. That's not what I'm running for. So, that's why I did that on that question in particular. And I do want to highlight that we did have, on July 14th, 2019, Seattle Times, they did give us yes/no questions on answers. And I worked very hard to only give you yes and no questions, so you understand where I'm coming from. I did not give you any maybes as a candidate. And we had five candidates, five maybes, five candidates, pardon me, five maybes from my opponent. And so, either there's wishy-washiness, or there's not forthcomingness. And I don't want either. I want you to know who you're voting for. I'm going to give you who I am. You can decide yes or no, and I'm fine either way. But we need to make sure you know who we are, because that is who we want in office, someone accessible, reachable, and honest with you.
Candidate Juarez, would you like to talk on any of these lightning round issues?
Was it the golf course, and what else did I waffle? I think I only waffled, I can't remember. Was it the golf course and the what?
Golf course.
Oh, the golf course. So, this is what's going on with the golf course. And, you know, one thing I have to say is, I work full-time. I'm on sound transit. We're doing reelection, doing a bunch of stuff. And I sit on two King County Council Boards, Board of Health and Regional Policy Council. I'm a little bit busy, and yes, I get a little tired. But the reason why I am waffling on the golf courses is this. We worked with the mayor and the superintendent of parks, because I chair parks, to say, hey, I did. We got four golf courses. We got one in North Seattle called Jackson Park. It was built in 1927. Because I chair parks, I want to know how much we are underwriting the golf courses, and I want to know how much of the public benefit is going to underserve communities. That's it. So, everybody should just calm down, and then, once we figure that out, one study came out in the fall. We have one in the March, and we have one final study coming up. So, it's a bit premature at this point.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a question from the audience. We're going to get your take on three different tax proposals, our issues before the council, and we'll ask this of candidate Juarez first. Do you support a tax on home heating oil, a tax increase on Uber and Lyft drivers, and a ban on natural gas in new construction?
Okay, so, let's start with the fair, the fair share one first. That's the TNCs. So, we know that we want to raise the tax 51 cents. We know that we want to do it in the next five years to raise $52 million for 500 homes, affordable housing spread across the city. Those homes would be in density areas where we have transportation. So, at this point, with the mayor's plan, I support that. The second one was the oil, gas?
Yeah, tax on home heating oil?
Yeah. The tax on home heating oil is the mayor's proposition that still hasn't gotten out of committee. We just had public comment. We're still figuring that out. What I've heard from meeting with labor, business, and the green community is we have a lot of work to do. We just passed the Green New Deal. We just put in the Oversight Committee. These are issues ripe for that, and my main concern, it would cost you $15,000 to $16,000 to transfer from oil to electricity. And I also worked with Seattle City Light to try to figure out whether or not Seattle City Light can even handle the load. So, that's still in flux.
Great. Candidate Sattler.
I don't think we should be taxing home heating oil, particularly in the north end. We have a lot of older homes up here, and it's going to be hard on homeowners, right? And hard on tenants. I think we need to make sure that we are doing this smartly. Absolutely, we want to make sure we're doing green energy, but we don't want to make sure that we make it more difficult and more costly for people to stay in their homes. What the last thing we want is to be getting people's pocketbooks so tight that they cannot afford to stay in the place that they're living currently. Fair shares, I do support that. I think that is a way that we need to make sure that there are payments being made for the usage of the roads, where people are making money. I think it is a way that we can still get that, and still have that, people access that type of transportation. As far as replacing natural gas completely, I don't think that's a way to go as well. There are purposes for that. I'm not a chef. There are many people who are. I say thank you for those who like it, because that's not going to be me. But you like to cook that way, right? So, there's some uses for gas that is actually appropriate, and there's other ways we can get it. And we need to make sure that we are aware of the carbon emissions and the production of it, as well as in the usage, and not just at the end of it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. Candidate Sattler, if you could explain why you want this job, and candidate Juarez, I have a little bit of more specifics for you. In an interview with the Seattle Times editorial board, you said, quote, "This is probably my last campaign. I'm kind of tired of it. I want to go back in the private sector." So, why are you running? And why do you want this job? Sattler, I believe you, candidate Sattler, you go first.
I like people, and I have a lot of energy. And I really want to make sure we have a different experience with hyper-local representation. And I believe it's not unreasonable to expect that. And I have been there. When people call me for problems, I have Andy somewhere in the audience call me, and he's just like, "Hey, there's an encampment going on down the road from us." So, I'm like, "I'll be there in 10 minutes." And it doesn't mean that just because I have X, Y, and Z going on, right? Because that's the job. This is the second-highest-paid, full-time city council position of the 40th-largest cities in America. It is not unreasonable to expect an answer from your full-time council member or their full-time staff. It is not unreasonable for that. I want to do this so that we have a better approach to government. We do not have to expect less. It is time to demand better customer service, and I am one of those. And I want this job, because I want to connect with you and have been doing so, to hear you. So, I work to hear you. You don't work to be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Juarez.
Yeah, thank you about the Seattle Times. That's actually pretty funny. I didn't, yeah, I said I was tired. And you know what? I'm 60 years old, and let me tell you something. I've had a wonderful career. I've had a phenomenal, and I love this job. And if you look at the brick-and-mortar and programs that I have delivered in the last five years, I am the poster child. No one has been the best councilwoman for the district. I put D5 on the map. I got my ass whooped over the police station when nobody was behind me. I made sure the sales center got done. I made sure that we raised $18 million to Lake City Community Center. I see Mark Mendez in the back, who helped do that. So, this is, and let me tell you, the context of the quote that I'm tired, yeah, I get tired. I work hard, man, and I read everything. And you know, when you negotiate a $1.8 billion deal for sales center, and you're trying to raise money...
Lots of public...
Can you please not interrupt me? Thank you.
Yeah, please.
And so, there is a reason when I said that. And you know why? This is a cultural piece. Why I said what I said is because in Indian country, this is how we are raised, to be kind, to be respectful, but more importantly, you lead to leave.
Okay, thank you.
Jurors and courthouse employees have described assaults, drug abuse, and the feeling of being unsafe along Third Avenue. If elected, how would you address the issues being described on Third Avenue? Candidate Juarez, you go first.
Well, on Third Avenue, as you know, that is a corridor that we have dealt with, like Aurora and some big chunks of Lake City Way. We are promoting, and I have been a full-fledged, full-thwarted support with the mayor, not only on the Ephesus patrols, but on the $13 million public safety package. We cannot get enough officers. I have supported the hiring of 40 new officers. I have supported our police station. I have supported the incentive pay and moved forward on the SPAG contract. Now, we all know what the north end needs. We have well over 300,000 people that not only live here, work here, and go to school here, but we need the public safety piece. With two light rail stations coming in, anticipated ridership is going to be between $40,000 and $50,000, or 50,000 people, I'm sorry. And so, what... And so what I propose and what we are still working on is either one or two police stations. So people in the North End, because we are the only district that does not have their own police station. And this police station, did you know that there have been 13 votes on the police station? And it's only been the 13th where people finally wanted to vote no. And so this time around, with the mayor's commitment and chief Best's commitment...
Thank you, that's time.
Is we're gonna get our police station.
Candidate Davidson Sattler.
I just want to say, where were you when people were contacting me about the encampment behind Lake City Way? Where were you when neighbors are calling me about encampments along public parks and schools? Where were you when people were calling and asking for help? Because I don't know, because we didn't hear your voice when the Ephesus patrols were provided, but there was no voice saying, "Why aren't we getting one in the North End?" They were all over the city, but there was not some in ordinary areas in District 5, the areas that definitely needed it. And the reason why there weren't is because the percentage of growth of crime in those areas was great, but that's because the experience of crime up here was already high. The percentage of growth was the only thing that was small. We did not hear a voice calling out for us to have help up here in the North End. And we all know that we needed it. We all are experiencing the same amount of crime, the same amount of safety concerns, and we want to know that we are gonna have people available for us. That means the officers here. That means we have a culture of welcoming officers. We make sure that they are following the law within the consent decree and we make sure that the residents are feeling heard and connected and that victims are heard and respected as well.
I'm gonna switch to North Gate for a question that we got from the audience today. It's why not fight to have more housing and retail commercial space at the North Gate Station versus fighting to bring three hockey rinks to the limited space near the transit station? And candidate Davidson Sattler, this will be for you first.
I guess I would say, yes, why is that? Right, it's great to have hockey. Everyone knows I worked for the Sonics, right? Hockey would be great, but at the same time, we are, we do have a large area of space where we could be having a lot of affordable housing, more than what is provided. And I will say that it's probably not going on just by my opponent. It is happening because of a property development owner, right? And that is the people that are doing the work. There's a lot of credit being taken when work is not necessarily being done by the person who's taking the credit. I want to make sure that we have the housing available. That means we are expediting permitting processes, we have affordable housing online. We do not need people paying a development fee and then doing it later. We needed it yesterday, we needed it last year, we needed it the entire term of her being on the council. That's what I want.
Candidate Juarez.
Thank you. Well, let me give you the facts. We are doing density. We have upzone North Gate on Holler Lake and Bitter Lake. And we are doing transit-oriented housing and transit-oriented development. Up to today's date, we have provided 1,200 units of affordable housing in D5. We've also done the Tony Lee House, the Broadview Compass House, and Clement Place. Now, it isn't just three ice rinks. Please understand this because I am the woman that negotiated those three major contracts and have been working with the NHL and OVG. We are going to have three ice rinks, that's true. We are also gonna have 1,500 units of market-rate housing. We're also gonna have two hotels. We are also expanding the footprint for more local business, a union grocery store, and what I've been really proud of is child-oriented childcare. So this goes beyond just an ice skating rink. And let me tell you, I have been everywhere. When Tech Willa tried to offer the NHL 10 acres for free, I said, "No, the deal was D5." The reason why we're doing that there is because we wanted that density. We want people to be able to get on light rail, pick up their kids, get their groceries, and go home and not have to drive a car.
Thank you.
Okay, this is another question that comes from the audience. How can we best deal with a very high crime rate between Linden and Aurora? Specifically, they ask about 135th, between 135th and 145th Streets. And they also ask, you know, is prostitution part of the problem here? I think candidate Juarez, you go first, please.
Great. I'm glad you asked about that because I, this has been such an important issue for us. We already know in our district that crime is down 10% citywide. There's a 17% drop in violent crime on the D, you know, please don't be rude, laugh.
Please, audience, let her finish.
Come on. So there has been a 17% drop in violent crime in D5's Aurora Common and we have gotten money for Ephesus patrols on Aurora. Now, we work with Captain Sano and we work with Chief Carmen Best. So what I'm talking about is there are some issues on Aurora. We have given money to particular organizations like Aurora Commons to deal with women that are in prostitution and sex trafficking. One of the things that we've been trying to do is get people into treatment and we've been successful in doing that. We got the Monarch Hand Kit. They bought 20 and they used 17 and saved 17 lives. What we have done is, and we've worked with those patrols and we've worked with those officers and we've worked with the NAV team and we're not letting up. We doubled the budget for the NAV team. I co-sponsored with Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. And candidate Sattler.
I love this question, whoever in the audience asked it. I was just out at Linden Avenue yesterday before I went to a jujitsu class, which I will be having people come to that with me after the, after the forum. I've got some questions for people. So that area is really critical. There is one block off of Aurora and it's really critical that people understand this is a high-traffic area with high crime, despite what you just heard from my opponent. Everyone in the audience knows with their experience on the day-to-day basis, if she was around the neighborhoods, she would know it as well. Right now, what's happening is we are allowing left-hand turns off of Aurora and there are, make sure that they go into the neighborhoods where the crime is then being committed. When I was out door-knocking, and pardon me, I'm gonna make sure there's no young minds in the room at the moment, I cannot count the number of condoms that I saw all along my walk door-knocking, right there on Linden, almost at every single house. And that's what I hear from neighbors at their doors, is the complaints and the problems about prostitution is very concerning. And we can actually do that. If we were to block the left-hand turns, we would make sure that people cannot turn into the neighborhoods off of Aurora. We would be moving it somewhat until we get enough officers on the ground.
Thank you.
Another audience question. You're both lawyers. Can you highlight something that you've done in your career and why that experience makes you better prepared at City Hall? Candidate Davidson Sattler, you can go first.
This is my second career. I did go to law school in my 30s. It's not something that I chose to do when I came out of college. What I chose to do out of college was go work in a refugee camp and teach English in Thailand. So it's critical that you understand that I am not the, just a Wall Street lawyer or anything else. I'm here because I decided that it was something to do, to be better equipped, to have a skillset to do the things that I'm able to do, which is lead. And that means lead with a heart and lead with connection. It is important to understand, I started off as an immigration attorney, something that was really proud of, to go to a swearing-in ceremony of a doctor from the Democratic Republic of the Congo. And at that same ceremony, there was one of the Sonics players I had helped, when he was playing from Slovenia, and he was also getting sworn in at the same ceremony. It was a great meeting of my two worlds and I feel like it's important to understand that I am not just a lawyer up here. I am a mom and I am a second-career lawyer and I want to make sure that people understand that they can connect with us. We are not out of reach.
All right, thank you, candidate Juarez. Can you repeat the question?
Sure.
This is again from the audience. You are both lawyers. Can you tell us, highlight something you've done in your career and why that experience makes you better prepared at City Hall?
Well, yes, I'm a lawyer and a mom and all the things that Ann is as well, and so I can appreciate that. But there's something more personal here that's going on. I have dedicated my life professionally and personally to social justice. I did that as a public defender to make sure that people had a right to counsel. I did that at legal services when I represented Native Americans and farm workers. I did that as a King County Superior Court Judge, where myself and Judge Martinez, who's now on the federal bench, did drug court when nobody else would do it. And I did it when I worked for two governors in Indian country and working for the state of Washington. And Wall Street was important. And let me tell you why, because I learned how to do debt financing. That's how I learned how to build big things. And I didn't just build casinos and golf courses. I built hospitals and schools and roads and bridges. And finally, every choice I have made has been from the public service perspective. I did not leave the private sector for a job where I've been getting paid less because I want to get paid less. I did it because I believe in the city, I believe in my district, I believe in my communities.
Thank you, that's time.
I have a question for you about the path forward on police accountability in Seattle. We have a federal judge who has said we're not in compliance with the consent decree. We have a mayor who is bringing in outside consultants to look at accountability in other cities and compare. And then we have a community police commission that says that the answer is really just to make the police contract fit what was in the legislation that the city already passed. Candidate Juarez, what will be your path forward in this situation?
Let me correct you first. I read the opinion by Judge Robart and I also read the transcript. They did not find us out of compliance. Under the 2012 consent decree, there were three issues: excessive force, biased policing, and the accountability regime. The first two counts were good. The third one was the accountability regime. The accountability regime was negotiated in a contract with SPAG. And that is what we have collective bargaining with. Some of those issues had reopeners issues, but one of them was not the accountability. One of the things I'm most proud of, and I did a bet with a stranger, is that the King County Superior Court Judge in August would repeal what the arbitrator did, and she did, or the judge did. He repealed and said that that officer did use excessive force and will not get his job back. So our path forward is this. Because those are union-negotiated contracts, we're not privy to those. You would be entertaining unfair labor practice if we were to interject. And we heard from labor that they don't want to hear us reopening negotiated contracts.
Great. And we'll give Ann Davidson Sattler a little extra time because I know this is a complicated issue and we gave candidate Juarez a few extra seconds, so go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, thank you. I am familiar with labor negotiations as well. I think it's a critical piece that this was done in a way that we make sure that labor understands, we hear their voice and that management also hears, has a voice as well. Like for example, with our renters' commission that we recently formed, we don't even have one landlord on that commission. We need to make sure we have both parties at the table, making sure that equal voices heard. The reason why we're having to talk about maybe reopening the CBA is because that wasn't done. There was so much divisiveness going on at the city level that it took how many years until we had one? Years before our police officers had a CBA because we had to talk about things that were not being addressed. That consent decree is critical. Our police officers are people that are men and women that are there helping to protect us. We want to make sure that they are getting the fair share of what they want to have in their CBA, that our council is not the one dictating it, and that we listen to the negotiations that occurred.
This is another question we have about that transit-related. The Center City Connector is meant to connect existing streetcar lines downtown but faces a funding shortfall. Do you support going forward with the project? And if so, where would you find the funding?
I don't support going forward with that because of the misplanning that occurred at the outset. I spoke with the driver of those streetcars and we were already ordering cars, I'm not sure why, that weren't in compliance and fit with the other cars that were inexistant. We're trying to purchase cars that are no longer manufactured. And here we are looking at millions of dollars that have been spent. We're talking about spending another millions of dollars to look at a study of how can we make it cost less? I'm thinking that we need to make sure we have competent people that are making these decisions, that it's critical that we do use our tax dollars in effective ways, and this was not one and it was already failed from the start. And I think it's a good thing that we put it on pause before we spent any more money on that.
Candidate Juarez.
Yes, we did vote for that. And I'll tell you what, there are two things going on. That is why, when I spoke earlier about fair share and the 52 million over five years and what we're anticipating, some of that, if we move forward after the study, will go to look at the Street Connector. Now, we did addition, vote to do the study out of Councilmember O'Brien's committee on the additional study because we have to find out whether or not it makes sense to go forward. So that's still in flux and we hope to have that before we lose Councilmember O'Brien. I don't think this is a finger-pointing thing where you can just get angry and say, you know, the world doesn't work like that and government certainly doesn't work like that. What we have to do, like all the other issues that have come up in this debate, is we have to be cognizant of the issues. We have to have the facts. We can't just walk around angry. We can't just blame government for everything. Some things, we just, sometimes we get it right, sometimes we get it wrong. Somebody got it wrong on the S-dot side. I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, it wasn't me. But I did vote for the 9 million to study it.
Great, thank you so much.
Another question from the audience. Will you work to preserve our parks as parks? This is for you first, candidate Juarez.
Yes, absolutely. That's what we do and we're excited. I work with Council, with Superintendent Jesus Ogare. We have our six-year plan coming up. We have, as you know, the Metropolitan Park District with funds coming in. When the voters first voted it, they, we focused on maintenance. The second study that's coming around, I'm trying to get money in the budget for hopefully a couple more community centers. We're still looking at that. And we want to protect parks. We want to protect the tree canopy, particularly in my district. We want to make sure we take care of Thornton Creek, both the North and the South Fork. We have bought property in the last six months. If some of you know that Red House on 125th, we just bought some money on the South Fork for SPU. So that has been our charge since I've taken that committee. I'm proud to say that we have always been under budget and we have not overspent money. We've protected those green spaces, we've protected those greenways, and we've expanded the social injustice equity area and looking at the public benefit piece, and I will continue to do that.
Candidate Sattler.
But where were you when all the encampments are going along Thornton Creek? And we have water contamination that's ending up in Matthews Beach, where we have E. coli at the, at the park there where there's families with young children who are playing in the sand. That's where I took my kids and I'm sure some of you took your kids there too. Of course, we want to save our parks. We also want to save our golf courses. I'm not sure if that's what this question was about. I've actually met with people from the Jackson Golf Course recently and have heard from them directly about why they want to have that park saved and why we should save all of them. It's a critical piece, we should be using it. Those are assets that if we let those go, we cannot get them back. We need to make sure we are protecting those green spaces, not just providing them. We are allowing them to become contaminated. The soil's contaminated. We had to take off two inches of soil when we are moving inhumanely, people from one place, having them set up in another. I'm saying that's not protecting our parks. I'm saying we need to be protecting our parks and that, we do that by providing a place for people to go. I'm not up here being angry. I'm up here because we want to be heard and we want things to take place, we want action, and we want protection for things.
This is a related audience question. How do you think Seattle should respond to unsheltered homelessness and how would racial equity inform your approach? Candidate Sattler.
As I've said before, I do have an approach for that. As I've said before, I do have an approach for that. This is an urgent issue, and it's been happening the entire time of my opponent's term in office. We declared that state of emergency, again, if you do not know, at the city and county level in 2015, a state of emergency on homelessness. And that means we have a variety of people that are unsheltered, and that includes minors. We had a man that was convicted of rape of two minors that was in an encampment. This is all going on under our noses while my opponent is in office, and there's no plan of action to address this. We have vulnerable people who cannot self-advocate, and they are in these encampments that we are allowing to stay. It is time for a sense of urgency, or else we are seeing what's happening in California. We do not want that happening. We want to make the decisions here. We don't want the federal government coming in at all. We want to do that. So that means we have to do it now, and that means we need to have a new city council, people who are going to take action. And it doesn't mean that they are going to stand by and wait for someone else to have an idea or blame someone else when it doesn't get done.
Candidate Juarez.
I just want to reiterate again that we have a 21% decrease in homelessness. And without going into all the stats again for the King County Regional Homeless Authority, which I've been a part of and planning, let me go back to something more humane and more kind about who we are, is Seattle, and what our values are. I want the federal government to come in. I don't want to hear Trump say that homeless people are garbage and are pollution and that they're polluting the bay with their needles. That is just simply not true. I want the federal government to come in, because at the same time, the same administration took away all of our federal money to shelter the unsheltered. And I'm tired of that. And so, you know, I got elected in 2016. Homelessness has been around well before I showed up. But I will tell you this: I worked hard under Mayor Murray. I worked hard under Mayor Durkin. And I'm not even on those committees, the chair, about the homelessness issue. And we're not going to stop. And you know what? One thing that I'm proud of is that we have moved at least 8% of people into sheltered housing. We've upped, doubled our protected high-barrier homes for shelters via tiny villages.
Thank you.
And I can share more later.
Okay, great. This is another audience question. This is about nonprofits. The city of Seattle partners with a lot of nonprofits. What would you do as a candidate to hold them accountable? And do you support auditing these nonprofits? I believe candidate Aquatas, you go first.
Yes. Actually, we've done that. We did an audit of that in 2017, and we have that whole change of theory through the Bob Poppy Report, the McKinsey Report, and that's what we've been trying to implement. We have given our housing providers or the social workers a 2.5 raise. We have expanded more housing provider services. That's why I'm such a big proponent of the King County Regional Homeless Authority, because all of that will go to services. And I don't want to get wonky here and start listing out what all those services are, but they are going to permanent supportive housing, they are going to treatment, to addiction, to the chronic homeless. And what I should say is when we did move out 27 tents in the Northgate area, we did get behind the Starbucks on Lake City Way, where Shayna, my district director, and moved those tents out. We did move the tents out behind Fitness 21. We did move the tents out of the south fork and the north fork of Thornton Creek. That's where I was. But guess what? My job isn't to physically be on the ground. We have a NAV team that does that.
Thank you, candidate Aquatas.
Thank you.
I think all of that's wrong, and people know that my opponent was not there at those locations. I was there, and I did not see her or anyone from her office at the time. I'm going to say that, yeah, the federal government wants their money, but just like what's happening at the regional authority, the municipalities that are nearby, they want to have a voice. And Seattle and King County is saying, well, we're putting in the money, we want to have the voice. So why would we have the federal government's money and not expect them to want to have a voice as well? So I say no. We want to make sure that we are taking this approach ourselves, the way that we want to do it, the way that is humane, not the way that our federal government does it, like my opponent wants. I want to make sure that we do it the way the Seattleites do it, which is with compassion, and that we make sure that we have people connected, and that we also know that we can enforce our laws, because then we can live in close proximity of one another. We can do it both. I want to make sure that when we're talking about nonprofit groups, we do want to have accountability. That is a great aspect to have in life and in business, and that means we can then be productive. We don't worry about who's getting the credit. We're getting the job done. And it's important to understand that when we're talking--
Thank you, candidate Sattler.
I have another audience question for you. What policies should the city adopt that it's not currently using to deal with homelessness and why? Candidate Davidson Sattler.
I'm sorry to keep repeating myself, but I will, because I think it is in time that we have this honest conversation. Imagine that, what would you want for your loved one? For your mom, or dad, or your brother, or sister? Imagine your entire block were to become unsheltered overnight because of a natural disaster. What response would you expect? Would you expect to pitch a tent in our park? I don't think you would want that for your mom. I wouldn't want that for my mom. I would expect there to be a place that we are told where she could go, where there are toilets and showers and onsite needs assessment. We are not doing that for our unsheltered neighbors, because they became unsheltered slowly. What if they became unsheltered overnight? What response would you expect? It is not a long-term solution, but we do need to be in a triage mode in this city, so that we have people inside. We are approaching our winter for how many times? And we will have people outside yet again. It is time for action. It's been happening the entire term while she's been in office. We need a plan. I know we have to work together, but we need ideas, and my ideas are put forward, and we need to get working.
Candidate Juarez.
Well, I know one issue that people say about homelessness is it is about addiction and it is about mental health. But the bottom line, what I've seen in the Minneapolis report and everywhere else, San Francisco, Los Angeles, is we need to build more units. We need to up our housing stock, and we haven't done that. We haven't done that because we have a market where we just haven't been able to get our nonprofits and our developers up and going. So that is the number-one issue. That's what I was hoping when I've been working with the King County folks on the Regional Governance Authority, that yes, we are dedicating that particular authority to the issues of emergency services, shelter, day center, outreach, health services, permitted encampments, I could go on and on. But for me, if I had a wish list, it would be have a laser-focused public development authority whose only job it is, is to build housing, and I work with Speaker Frank Chop on that.
And I'd like to follow up on that. I hear you saying more case management, a place for people to go where they get services. I hear candidate Juarez talking about urgently needing more housing. What are your revenue proposals to fund these initiatives more aggressively, if you have any? Does the city need new revenue? Where should it come from? Candidate Juarez.
Well, one, as we talked about, is the fair share piece, which I'm happy about. One of them is we just sold the big mega block, the big mega Mercer, which we are looking at housing, using that money for housing as well, and childcare. Now, I think we're going to have to look at more progressive tax revenues, but my position has always been that we have to put that out to the voters. And when I voted no the first time on the Amazon tax, it was during budget. Then I voted no again when it came up in the ordinance. Then I voted yes when I thought we had a deal, and then I voted to repeal it. So we will have to look at progressive resources.
What kinds of progressive resources? If I could follow up for 30 seconds?
You know, I'm going to have to hear from the public and what they want and what's going to come out of these two committees. We haven't done the committee shuffle yet. So I know what people want to hear, is I think you all want to hear me say, we're going to tax Amazon. I'm not going to say that. But what I will say is we do need to look at the tech industry and them paying their fair share.
Great. Candidate Sattler, and we'll give you the time to compensate, too.
Sure, thank you. In case you guys don't know, we have a $6.1 billion revenue stream and a $5.9 operating budget. It is almost twice the size of Boston. We have a large budget for our population. We have a lot of money coming in, and what we don't have is good stewardship of those tax dollars. It is critical that we understand that when we declared the state of emergency in 2015, we increased our spending on homelessness, but the number of people that were unsheltered went up and the number of deaths on the street went up. That means we had more people dying all throughout that time, even though we were spending more money. What I'm saying is, where were you? Why did we not hear anything about this? We do not need to be talking about additional funding right now. We need to be talking about adequate spending of the dollars that we have, that we get people into help, and the time is now to be doing it. This is not the time to be talking about why we didn't vote for this and why we changed our vote for that. It is time for action, and it has been past time for that.
Great. We have reached the closing statement portion of our debate. Thank you so much, candidates. And candidate Juarez, we will start with you, and you have 90 seconds for your closing statement.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for voting for me, some of you the first time, some of you during the general. I want to read something quickly to you. In October 2013, the Seattle Times endorsed moving to a district representation. They wrote, "Where do people go if there's a dangerous intersection in the Northgate area?" And so I'm here to tell you, you come to me, and people have come to us. We get thousands of emails a day. Do we get to everyone? Do we do our best? You bet. We are the only council office that has a district director, that has a district office, and you heard the other issues I raised. But on a personal note, let me just say this, and I've said it before. I have made these choices to be a public servant, because I care, and that may sound corny. And there's a reason why people have supported me. Emily's List, Planned Parenthood, all of King County Dems, all of King County Labor, all of business, the National Women's Political Caucus, the Native American Tribes, the Civic Alliance for Progressive Economy, which is CASE, the Seattle Hospitality for Progress, those are the hotels, Seattle Realtors, Seattle Subways, Transit Riders Union, the Washington State Housing Alliance Action Fund. And of course, I had the sole endorsement of the 32nd, the 46th, the 36th, King County Young Dems, and I could go on and on. And I'm very proud of the endorsement from Frank Chop, Representative Avia Fardir, I'm sorry, Valdez, Nicole McCary, Justin Faro, and Brody Wackenschaw, and this mayor. Thank you.
To me, what matters is you, the voters. That's the endorsement that I want, is from the voters. I also do have the Seattle Times endorsement, but what really matters is you and your quality of life, and that is what is going to be first to me.[1591.11]